Uh, no, no, that's a.
Okay, ready? Okay, it's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock. It is time on our schedule to start our weekly business meeting. If you'll all stand with me, Pastor Lawrence will open us in prayer. I can still call you pastor even though you're retired, right? Yes. I don't know if they took the title away or.
Our Father and our God, we come to you today in the name of Jesus. Your Son, we thank you for the privilege of living and working together in Bonner County. What a beautiful place you have given us to live and to serve one another. We ask your blessing upon our commissioners. We are also thankful for them and their years of service, willingness to be available to our county and its leadership. We ask that you'll bless and guide the discussions today and the results of those discussions. We just thank you for what you're doing in our lives in this county. And we give you praise in Jesus' name.
Man, thank you, sir. All me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Steve.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Time for public comment. Anybody sign up?
No.
Anybody wish to make public comment? Mr. Pilt, do you have anything you wanna? Words of wisdom? Good recipes?
You gotta hear thoughts.
Yeah, we don't wanna hear your thoughts. Anyway, so. Just kidding. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment, Doug?
So I was wondering what the five over five K for the sheriff are.
It's, it's confidential. Is what it says.
You just said we can't tell that. Just kidding.
I don't know. It's listed as confidential right on the front of it, so.
Yeah, whenever we're dealing with IT infrastructure, any kind of IT infrastructure, we can.
Yeah, IT infrastructure.
Any other question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move it along to the clerk's office. Mike Roosevelt.
Morning Commissioners, morning everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year twenty-two claims batch twenty-three in the amount of one million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And demand batch twenty-three in the amount of five hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Totalling two million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred ten dollars and one penny.
One cent.
Your approval. I can elaborate on what some of those demands were. Here. So the big ones, one hundred ninety-three for medical, hundred and seventy-three thousand for paving, which Jason can talk about if he wants to. About thirty thousand for dental administration. Um, sixty-two thousand for Roden Bridge, new Dodge. Thirty-four thousand for new GIS pickup and thirty thousand for for text flow photography. I'm not sure exactly.
There you have it. Okay.
Yeah.
Good luck.
I've moved to approve payment of the FY twenty-two claims and demands and batch number twenty-three totaling two million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred ten dollars and one centi.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Seems odd to see Matt Mulder looking at us with his phone camera.
Yeah.
See none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, next I have EMS claims batch twenty-two in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents. And demand batch twenty-three in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars and thirty-one cents. Totalling two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-two cents. The big line item on that was the ambulance free now. Of about of about exactly hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY twenty-two EMS claims and demands and batch number twenty-three, totaling two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Oh, and second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All the favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
The planning, Chad.
Morning Commissioners, members of the public. Thanks for being here. Sorry I sound out of breath.
You had no choice.
Um, so first item for you today is a road waiver request to waive the private road standards for boundary line adjustment. Um, this adjustment literally is just moving lines from north, south to east, west. So the property is gonna remain, both properties will remain ten acres in our ten zone. Um, and basically improving the road, uh, the letter that was written by the applicant would be financially burdensome. And so that's why the request is before you today and I can answer any questions.
All right, I move to approve the applicant's request to deviate from the road standards set forth in Bonner County Revised Code Appendix A Title Twelve for Boundary Line Adjustment File, BLA zero zero one nine dash two two.
Am I second the motion?
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Go ahead, Chad. Go to number two.
Thanks. I've got it. Next one is the same request, but it's for a family division. For the Invic family, um. This property actually borders, uh, Boundary County. And so there's a hell roaring road and right now they have like a driveway use when it comes down off that road, actually like in Bonner, sorry, Boundary County into Bonner County. Um, and so again, it's the same request. Um, in this case though, it's not a boundary line adjustment. They're dividing about twenty point oh one acres into two equal um, divisions for family, uh, one remaining property of ten point zero zero five acres and one parcel as a gift. Um, the same acreage. And so the nature of the quest is the same as before. Be financially burdensome to improve, um, the road to the private road standards. Um, I would note though that they are gonna be required to reserve a road name for the purposes of EMS so they can be accessed in the case of an emergency. I can answer any questions.
Chairman, I move to approve the applicant's request to deviate from the road standard set forth in the Bonner County Revised Code Title Twelve, Appendix A for file FE zero zero one one dash two two.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Go ahead, Doug.
That Patterson for the record, um, so you mentioned going this piece of ground going from twenty acres down to two ten acre pieces?
Correct.
Um, that's part of the road waiver?
Right, so the family division, um, it triggers the private road standards. And the reason for that being is it specifically calls out Title twelve, six two four, um, C, which then says that has to be compliant with subsection B, which says that the roads have to be built to the private road standards for the purposes of family division.
And, and the, the comprehensive plan for that area, how many acres are they allowed?
Ten acre man.
Is zone ten acre.
Correct. Yep.
It's the zoning, so it's zone ten acre.
Thank you. Yep. We have to make sure it's compl- any land divisions comply with the zoning ordinance before we approve.
Okay, any other question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's it. Thank you, Chad. Solid waste, Bob.
I'm Doug.
All right, Commissioner Bob Howard for the record. Um, solid waste is seeking approval to advertise for, uh, request for bids to remove the metal piles from Dickinson, Idaho Hill and Colburn, uh, waste transfer sites. Our current contract ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I stay in the RFQ. Contract is no cost to Bonner County and the bids will be reviewed and based on the amount offered to the county per ton of scrap metal.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve that the county approved the issuance and advertisement of a request for bid to remove the metal piles at Dickinson, Idaho Hill and Colburn Waste Transfer Sites.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Good, Bob, number two.
Um, Water County Solid Waste is seeking approval in the issuance and advertisement of request for bid to hire qualified licensed contractor to grind wood debris piles located at Colburn, Idaho Hill and Dickinson Waste Transfer Sites. Our current contracts ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the county approve the issuance of advertisement of request for bids to grind and remove the wood piles at Colburn, Idaho Hill and Dickinson Waste Transfer Sites.
Second that.
You have a motion to second. Any question? Do this every year. See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good, Bob, number three.
Water County Solid Waste is seeking approval in the issuance and advertisement of request for bid to hire a qualified licensed contractor to accept package transport and dispose of our household hazardous waste at various collection sites throughout the county on each Saturday. Our current contract ends on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Good, Steve.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on your information before us, I move to approve the count, uh, proofing the count, approve the issuance and it advertisement of request for bid to accept package transport and dispose of household hazardous waste at various collection sites throughout the county on each Saturday.
I'll second the motion. It's county, I think. I, I, I read county and did it. We're gonna Melissa.
I didn't type that.
It's okay. You see that bus come along me?
Yeah.
Under, okay.
My poor Melissa.
Okay, we have a motion to second, um, and we will send a card to Melissa. Um, any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank Bob, thanks. I'm gonna call Melissa back way and let her know you're doing her last.
We can order box shots.
Justice Services, Rod. What, Rod?
More than everyone. Um, having a recommendation that the board approve the cost for phase one of the replacement of the touchscreen and intercom systems at, uh, Justice Services, specifically the juvenile detention facility. Uh, as set forth in the attached proposal from PNW Integration LLC in the amount of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, uh, payment for phase one of the replacement will be made from uh, probation services FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget account. Uh, I'll not repeat the number because I know you guys will have to do that. Uh, which is for building and repairs and maintenance to the facility in the amount of forty thousand dollars and the remaining twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars uh, will come from probation services FY twenty-one, twenty-two account. Uh, cigarette tax carryover. And just to give you a little more information, the big, uh, crux of this is to upgrade the Wonderware software that's kinda like the superhero or software that runs all of the touchscreens that opens the doors and it turns lights on and off. It operates the intercom. And so our system that we currently have is Wonderware, but it was installed in two thousand eleven when built and is beginning to fail. So that's all that Wonderware, which is a mostly programming, which is the bulk of this cost will be the programming of that. Which this gentleman has the expertise to be able to do and that will uh, then enable us for that system not to fail, but it also integrates all the other pieces. So it all works smoothly. Uh, so that way the cameras are, are recording, uh, the intercoms are working properly, including the ones that are between the individual cells. Um, and, and just make sure that everything operates the way it should. Otherwise, if it doesn't, then, then it, it puts a considerable amount of liability onto the county because uh, one, if there's an emergency, now we're having to go through key all the doors open. Takes time and very, very slow. Uh, we did put this out to bid, um, but I mean, we had a couple of people come in and give us a bid. The first bid from Cornerstone, uh, came in at two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the whole project. We asked them after we got this bid to come out again and look at things because the whole number wasn't even feasible for us either. They came out about two months ago and looked at things, said they'd get us a bid, didn't get anything. I emailed the gentleman again about three, four weeks ago and never heard from him. Um, this, this bid, and like I said, we're gonna do it in two phases. The overall project will be a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, but we'll do the second project in next year's uh, budget after I get the unexpected revenue from our contracts because that's what's paying for this this time along with the tobacco tax. That forty thousand dollars that's in that line item is from our unexpected revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the cost of phase one for replacement of the touchscreen and intercom system at Justice Services in the amount of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars as set forth above.
And the second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Wonderware, go ahead.
Not just, it's like the super, it's like the superhero of software. I, I don't know. That's just what it's called.
Like good stuff.
It does make things. And like I said, it's already failed. We have doors every once in a while that we have these fobs that open all the doors that are on the outside. Right? And they sometimes they just don't work at different times. So then we have to reconfigure the whole system. Find that things are starting to operate.
So any question or comment? About Wonderware?
I didn't name. Yeah, I didn't name it then.
Okay. See none? All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Rod. Public Defender's Office, Suzie. Suzie, do you have any special software you wanna talk about today?
I am not gonna answer. Hi, good morning. We are moving the Commissioners to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Indigent Defense Financial Assistant Assistance Agreement, uh, for submission to the Public Defense Commission. So it needs to be signed. Uh, the Public Defense Commission approved a financial assistance award this year or for the upcoming year in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, along with a one-time award of a hundred and eighty-five dollars. And workload assistance in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, so what do you think? Well, I didn't approve it. She said pretty nice.
She's always pretty nice.
So it's pretty nice.
Well, okay.
Face, that's all that really matters, so.
I moved the Commissioner to approve the FY twenty twenty-three Indigent Defense Financial Assistance Agreement for submission to the Public Defense Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Doug?
How much, about how many indigents per year do you get?
That's a very good question. I do not know off the top of my head. I know that it goes up every year, uh, the number of clients we get.
At a guess?
Hundred seventy-five.
More than that.
More than that.
Fill a number out there.
I'd say at least it's over a thousand. Out across the board.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, no, no, got plenty here already. Don't need to bust any of them in.
Okay, any question or comment? See none? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
That's just, thank you, Suzie. Cindy.
Home room.
Well, I can't top that. So Cindy Baker for, uh, the record and we have one agenda item for today. It's a request to recruit uh, planning a permit tech and sheriff driver's license clerk and both of those are vacated.
Um, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve commencing and recruitment for a permit technician, planning and a driver's license clerk sheriff effective August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Recreation Pete. Good, I didn't see a seat over there. Very still.
Trying to stay incognito.
Yeah.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Pete Hughes for the record. Um, I have one item for consideration this morning. Is the, uh, regarding the Garfield Bay Campground Annual Employee Campout from September ninth through the eleventh. As a token of our appreciation for the continued hard work and commitment Bonner County employees make to this agency, we'd like to request opening the Garfield Bay Campground to Bonner County employees and their families, of course, for one weekend of free campings be for one weekend only. And reservations will be run through the recreation office.
We had to bring our hand.
You don't have to.
Honey, if you're watching, I'm just kidding. I'll bring it.
Based on the information before us, I move that the county approve opening the Garfield Bay Campground from September ninth through the eleventh to free camping for Bonner County employees.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment?
You're dead, man.
See none? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Pete. Roden Bridge. It has no name on here, so I don't, I see Tom's here, you're here. I don't know what's going on.
Let's feel a little left out. Marine pointed out to me this morning.
Well, we can talk about sunrise.
We can. I know a few good spots. Jason Top, Roden Bridge Director for the record. Is the, uh, greater leases the number one on you guys?
Yes, yes.
Cause I got. The greater leasing. So this is to renew our three leases that we have with Columbia Bank will be lease number one eight three one zero four nine for one grader with an annual payment of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Lease number two is one nine three eight zero two four for six graders with an annual payment of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And lease number three is two zero six five five eight one is for one grader with an annual payment of ten thousand dollars. This is something that we have to do every year is to renew our leases with Columbia Bank. The funds for this will come out of budget line items zero zero two ninety-three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the three letters of intent to renew the greater lease purchase agreements with Columbia Bank and to authorize the chairman to sign the agreements administratively.
Second that.
Give me a motion second. Any question or comment?
We get a greater lease, um, this is a different one, but I mean, almost every couple of weeks.
Yeah, you'll have another one coming up too with the three new agreements, so.
So seeing no questions, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, number two.
All right, this one is for our safety improvement program, the LED stop signs, state and local agreement for the design phase. In twenty twenty, Roden Bridge submitted a safety grant application to upgrade eighty intersections with flashing LED stop signs and radar control. So they will begin flashing as vehicles approach and flash faster if they do not detect the vehicle slowing down. The stop signs will be increased to forty-eight inches and we will also be adding advanced warning signs for stop sign ahead. All these modifications have been shown to effectively reduce accidents at intersections. LTAC has selected Bonner County for funding at a reduced level to fit the project into the program. And have sent the attached state and local agreement to commit Bonner County to the project. The initial proposal was for eight hundred and fifteen thousand. And LTAC is awarding five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As a result, the scope will be reduced and some of the intersections removed. The total cost is estimated at five hundred and fifty thousand, of which Bonner County will pay seven point three four percent for an estimated total match of forty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. At the signing of this agreement, an initial payment of two thousand will be due, which will come from zero zero two nine thousand grant county match, which has a remaining balance of three hundred thousand. Going forward, each sign set up as a total material cost of twenty-six hundred dollars if needing to be completely replaced by Bonner County expenses.
All right, I move the board Bonner County Commissioners approve the state and local agreement for project P number two, three, two, eight, six. Stop control intersection safety improvements and making a ma- uh, make an initial match payment of two thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment?
Honey Wilson, for the record, I'm just wondering who pays to replace those when they get damaged by vehicles?
Bonner County will replace whatever ones get damaged by vehicles going forward of the ones we actually replace.
Do we have a budget for that?
That is something we're still working on. We will have some monies to cover some of this. I'm not anticipating every single sign being torn out every winter. And we're taking a lot of the highway intersections out, so that should clear up a lot of it. But we will have funds to cover some of these projects that are going forward with it.
Is there some way to make the responsible party pay for this? It seems like.
That, that's a good question. You know, we run that through risk through our management.
I'd have to imagine.
Would be through insurance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how I've been able to stop all this time without, but.
Yeah.
This'll help you. I'm pretty sure. As you're getting old.
You'll see.
Action span.
Yeah.
Okay, any other question or comment, Doug?
You said twenty-six hundred bucks per sign?
First line. That's the entirety of the poll.
That's the cost of the sign.
I, I understand, but what is a regular, you know, dumb sign cost?
Oh, probably right around that three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollar.
But it doesn't have a flashing line on it.
I know.
It won't have a flashing light on it.
Wow, how many accidents did they stop?
Right, a lot. No, I don't know. As, as more people move to the area, it seems like they need help stopping.
Yeah, we're finding that this kind of weird anomaly.
It saves one life.
They wanna have lines on gravel roads, all kinds of weird stuff. They don't know which side to drive on. Maybe they think we're the UK. I don't know.
And better dirt in the winter.
Yeah.
And when they slide into the sign, if they get stuck in the snow, then we'll know who hit.
Okay, any other question or comment? See none? All of the favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. I just said, you know, to kind of throw something out there. I think this process was started like three years ago, um, during a safety audit and all kinds of different things. And we put in for this, we agreed to it. And since then, you know, I mean, we're a little less enthusiastic than we were, but we're still moving forward.
That is true.
That is true.
That is true. Okay, go ahead with number, uh, three.
All right, this one. In two thousand nineteen, this is the award, the railroad crossing pavement for the gravel roads. Two thousand nineteen, Roden Bridge submitted a grant application to the local highway safety improvement pro- program, seeking funding for new asphalt on all the gravel road railroad crossings within our jurisdiction. These improvements will eliminate the need for Bonner County graders to operate up onto the railroad tracks and increase traction available for drivers stopping for trains. Bonner County application was selected to be funded, but rising cro- costs have caused forced LTAC to remove six of the crossings from the project to meet funding constraints. Those which remain in the program have now been su- successfully completed by LTAC. I just signed off on that. Roden Bridge has select solicited separate quotes for three contractors to complete the asphalt on the remaining six crossings, which were removed from the grant program. With two contractors responding. The six, these are six separate quotes. And will be specified that each crossing is a separate project, which will be awarded individually. The low quotes are as follows. Kelsa Lake Railroad Crossing Interstate Concrete and Asphalt for thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. The Edgemere Railroad Crossing is going to Woods Crushing and Hauling for fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The Thama Drive Interstate Concrete and Asphalt will get that one for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety. The Berry Lane Railroad Crossing Interstate Concrete and Asphalt will get that one for twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and five. The McGee Railroad Crossing Woods Crushing and Hauling will get that one for nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty. And the Firestone Road Intersect- Railroad Crossing Interstate and Asphalt will get that one for twenty-three thousand. The total cost of paving all six of these is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. The funding will come from zero zero two. The funding will come from zero-zero-two, eighty-four ninety, plant asphalt mix, which has an unobligated amount, remaining balance of two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award the Kessel, Kelsa Lake, Thama Drive, Berry Lane, Firestone Road Railroad Crossing paving projects, the Interstate Concrete and Asphalt for a total amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, and award the Edgemere Road, McGee Road Railroad Crossings paving project to Woods Crushing and Hauling for a total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, second, Deb. Give you a motion in a second, any question or comment? See none, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, this is for approval for guardrail expenditures over five thousand. Roden Bridge Department requests approval to spend over five thousand to hire Frank Gurney Incorporated to install go- guardrail in two locations, the forty-eight-hundred block of Upper Pack River adjacent to the river and the one thousand block of Gold Creek Road on a steep embankment of Gold Creek Hall. Roden Bridge solicited three quotes from different guardrail vendors and received two responses that follows. Frank Gurney is sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-six, eighty-eight cents. And Railco LLC for sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Funds will come from zero-zero-two, eighty-five, fifty-two guardrail, which has a remaining balance of fifty thousand and the remaining thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six, eighty-eight will come from zero-zero-two, eighty-five, fifty-one bridge repairs, which has an unobligated amount of fifty thousand.
All right, I move to approve this expenditure of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to hire Frank Gurney Incorporated to install guardrail on Upper Pack River Road and Gold Creek Road.
I'll second the motion.
Give you a motion in a second, any question or comment? These guardrails also. No. See none, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, it is nine thirty-two and we'll go ahead and, uh, recess for five minutes and then come back with executive sessions.
Is it just me, or does it cost a lot of money when Mike, Jason and Suzie go up?
Yeah.